Good evening. This is the 55th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight invocation will be provided by Pastor Louis Wilson of New Song Community Church, Inc. And following the invocation will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend?
Father in heaven, we, we thank you so much. Father, we realize that you are a good, good father. And so, Lord, we come with humility. We come with a profound sense of dependence. And so, Lord, we pray, Lord, that you would use this, this session, this, this meeting, and that you would indial your, your servants, servants that you have chosen even before the foundation of the world. And pray that you would use them, Lord, to direct and guide and serve our cities, serve our city in ways, Lord, that even they have not even imagined yet. We pray, Lord, for our city. We pray for those who have a sense of hopelessness. And we pray even for those who have a great sense of hope and that somewhere they could meet in the middle. And then we would do the utmost and profound things that this city needs. We pray, Lord, that Baltimore would be that city that becomes one that is a city on a hill, that becomes a beacon for this state, for this country, of how we can do more, be better, how we can excel, and how we can become brothers and sisters caring for one another from the depths of our hearts and our minds and our souls. And so now, Lord, I pray your blessing and your wisdom upon this gathering today for each and every person here, Lord, again, that we can be reflective and contemplative of all that you had before and all that you had before them to be done. Lord, we ask this prayer in the majestic and powerful name of Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Wilson. Thank you. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation will be provided by Latrice Price, Community Outreach Specialist in the Living Legacy Foundation of Maryland. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Like you said, my name is Latrice. I'm with Living Legacy Foundation of Maryland. I left some information out in the hallway. Our organization is an organ procurement organization. We are the organization that's responsible for saving lives of those people that are waiting in the state of Maryland for a life-saving organ transplant at either John Hopkins or University of Maryland. One of our goals is to, we want to educate people in the community before they're faced with having to make that decision of their loved one becoming an organ donor during a tragic time. So, some of the things that we do in the community, we, last year or the last couple of years, we've given out a thousand backpacks with school supplies. We've partnered with Councilman Pinkett. Last year, we did a block party. Again, this year, July the 14th, during that time, it's National ECHO. And ECHO stands for Every Community Has Opportunity. We're going to do that block party again where we're going to serve food to the people, play, have music, give out backpacks again. We'll have other agencies there to help meet some of the needs of people in the community. On April the 25th, April is National Donate Life Month. We are planning a, a empowering clergy and community leaders event. And I think Monique was going to share, send that email out so hopefully we can have you all come to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all that you do. It is the Council of Council to generalize the invocation, ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. motion by Henry, seconded by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have, the motion is adopted. We now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the March 18th City Council Meeting is on councilmembers' desks.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion, most of my councilmen, Scott, seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently in the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0357, Fire and Police Employees Retirement System, Interests, Service Credits, Death Benefits, Direct Deposit, and Technical Corrections. For the purpose of repealing certain obsolete and obsolescent provisions, changing the definition of regular interest for valuation purposes, clarifying that crediting of military service under certain circumstances, modifying the calculation of the cost of purchasing and transferring prior system service, non-credited city service, former Maryland police corps service and service earned for employment covered under a former non-city pension, expanding the definition of minor child for certain purposes, allowing certain spousal beneficiaries age 70 and over to remarry without penalty of losing benefits, allowing new beneficiary elections and survivorship option elections within certain time periods requiring that after a certain date and subject to certain exceptions, periodic benefit payments to be made electronically, defining certain terms, providing for special effective dates, and generally relating to the Baltimore City Fire and Police Employees Retirement System. Sponsors: City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash 035A, Children and Youth Fund, Interim Governance and Administration One-Year Extension. For the purpose of extending for one year the interim administrative structure for the Children and Youth Fund, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the Children and Youth Fund established by a City Charter Article 1, Section 13. Sponsors: President Young, Henry Costello, Bullock, Stokes, Snead, Dorsey, Cohen, Pinkett, Scott, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton.
Please note Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. I spoke earlier to, please note Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. I spoke earlier at the luncheon about this. This is just to give them an extra year to get all the things they need to get done in place. As we know, during the initial phase of this Children and Youth Fund, there was a lot of meetings and a lot of things going on. And on the timeline, we knew we would come back and ask for an extension. So, this is to make sure that they don't shut down and money can still get into the hands of the community organizations that need to be able to get their work done. So, I want to thank all the co-sponsors. This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0359, Open Space Zoning Districts Tree Canopy Preservation. For the purpose of requiring the approval of the Fourth Street Division of the Department of Recreation and Parks prior to any tree removal on certain properties within a Baltimore City open space zoning district and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors: Clark, President Young, Bullock, Stokes, Snead, Dorsey, Cohen, Pinkett, Henry, Scott, Reisinger, Middleton.
Okay. Please note that Councilman Burnett is a co-sponsor. Okay. Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, we have clean air. Now, we're trying to build on that and to begin a campaign of cleaning up in all parts of the atmosphere, from the ground up to the sky. This is for our tree canopy and its legislation proposed that in open space zoned properties only. And that's what it sounds like. It's a new zoning category in this new zoning code. You cannot cut in private sector open space properties. You cannot remove a tree without the approval of the city forester. So, that's what it's all about. It's to try to keep what we have and build on it with more plantings instead of always losing and trying to catch up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0360, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District Variance 1214 Bolton Street. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on a property known as 1214 Bolton Street as outlined in red on the accompanying plat and granting a variance from certain off-street parking regulations. Sponsors: Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0361, Rezoning 2423 and 2425 Greenmount Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 2423 and 2425 Greenmount Avenue as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, from the C1 zoning district to the C4 zoning district. Sponsors: Stokes, Reisinger.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 19 dash 0145R, April as National Kidney Donation Awareness Month. For the purpose of recognizing April as National Kidney Donation Awareness Month. Sponsors: Pinkett, President Young, Bullock, Stokes, Cohen, Scott, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Pinkett. Please note Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As our president stated earlier, March is National Kidney Awareness Month, and one in three American adults is at high risk for developing kidney, kidney disease today. High blood pressure, diabetes, a family history of kidney failure, and being over 60 are major risk factors for developing kidney disease. And it's unfortunate that far too many of our residents suffer from these factors. In addition to that, in April each year, the National Donate Life Month is also recognized where NDLM features an entire month of local, regional, and national activities to help encourage Americans to register as organ eye and tissue donors. ZIP codes like 21216, 21217 lead in the area of receiving transplants but trail in donations. And so, this resolution is designed to bring awareness to this critical cause. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Please note Councilman Henry is a co-sponsor. You moving, you moving the resolution right?
Yes, I'd like to move the resolution for immediate adoption.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, the rules are suspended. Chair of the Council, Councilman Pinkett.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, 19 dash 0145R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, this resolution is adopted. Chair of the Council, Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that a City Council Resolution can be introduced from the floor.
Seconded by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of suspending rules to allow for the introduction of this City Council Resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, the rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 19 dash 0146R.
Thank you, Mr. President.
City Council Resolution 19 dash 0146R, Defining Gender-Based Discrimination in City Schools. For the purpose of urging the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners to pass Policy JBB, an updated district policy that expands protections for students beyond sexual harassment, clearly defines gender-based harassment, and enacts important protections and defines the rights of transgender and gender non-conforming students in city schools. Sponsors: Cohen.
Please note Council President Young is a co-sponsor. Councilman Scott is a co-sponsor. Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Reisinger, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman Snead, Councilman Henry, Councilman Dorsey, Chair of the Council, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we stand with LGBTQ students, teachers, community members, and allies in calling on the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners to pass Policy JBB. This policy clearly defines gender-based harassment, defines the rights of transgender and gender non-conforming students in city schools, and enacts important protections. This city council has consistently stood up for public safety, particularly for groups that are marginalized. According to Glisten, over half of transgendered students, 54%, have been denied access to restrooms that are consistent with their gender, and nearly half of transgender students, 48%, have been prevented from using their chosen name. Nearly one in 10 LGBTQ students have been physically assaulted due to their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. We know that bullying and harassment and even violence are a reality for LGBTQ kids across our country and here in Baltimore. Last week, I listened to city schools, a city school's teacher who described a climate of harassment that was so toxic that as a trans woman, she could not take it. Staff and administrators did not know how to respond. After this year, that talented teacher will leave our school system. That is a tremendous loss for our kids. I spoke to a transgender student who had been bullied so badly that they thought about taking their own life. They felt like the school system and the government had ignored their pain and rendered them invisible. Asked what we could do as a city to make life better, and they said, "Councilmen, we just want to be seen." This policy is a step in the right direction toward letting our LGBTQ brothers, sisters, and siblings know that they are not only seen but loved. I also want to make clear that we will not ask the school system to do what we will not do ourselves. In the coming weeks, I will introduce legislation to make single-stall city restrooms gender neutral. We have an opportunity to make Baltimore a national leader in recognizing and affirming our LGBTQ community. I want to thank Jabari, Elaine, Kimberly, Alex, and the many other LGBTQ advocates and allies who are leading this movement for safety and justice. And so, I ask my colleagues for immediate adoption of this resolution, which I will present to the school board before they vote on April 9th. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend the rules to allow for immediate adoption.
Seconded by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, the rules are suspended. Chair of the Council, Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, I would like to move the resolution.
Seconded by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, 19 dash 0146R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent calendar, section A, at the back. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Motion by Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, this calendar is approved. We now move the bills on second read of the executive appointments committee.
EA 19 dash 0239, David C. Ryer, Director, Baltimore City Department of Planning, District 3.
Chair of the Council, Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee has hearings on March the 13th, the 20th. I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Please note that Councilman Schleifer is a no. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 19 dash 0241, Quentin M. Herbert Esquire, Director, Department of Human Resources, District 3.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Scott. I mean, Chair of the Council, Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Third read for final passage.
City Council Bill 17 dash 0074, Zoning Conditional Use Parking, Open Off-Street Area, 3023 Virginia Avenue. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking, open off-street area on the property known as 3023 Virginia Avenue as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. President?
Where is it? Where is it? It's not on here. We have to go back. It's not on here. Jose just brought it to my attention. Chair of the Council, read that, then Ed. It's dockless.
Okay. Okay. City Council Bill 19 dash 0324, Dockless Vehicles Regulation and Taxation. For the purpose of establishing the dockless vehicle program requiring permits for dockless vehicle for hire providers imposing certain data, sharing requirements upon dockless vehicle for hire providers, providing for the revocation of dockless vehicle for hire providers, provider permits under certain circumstances, establishing certain standards of operation, defining certain terms, imposing certain penalties, allowing for the seizure of a dockless vehicle under certain circumstances, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, governing bike lanes, imposing an excise tax on dockless vehicle for hire providers, generally relating to the regulation of dockless vehicles, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, first of all, I want to compliment DOT for the great job they did on this bill. We had a hearing. It was a good hearing. There's amendments from the committee that's on my colleague's desk. I want to move those committee amendments.
Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have, Chair of the Council.
I, I have a technical amendment, Mr. President, that's on my colleague's desk. I move the technical amendment.
Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor in approving this technical amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion currently, Chair of the Council.
Uh, Mr. President, this time, I can defer to my colleague from the 14th District who has an amendment.
Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I have an amendment to offer at this time. It is an amendment which limits the liability of the operation of these various dockless programs to the companies who own them and not to spread the liability out as the original, as the First Amendment has, among employees and contractors, et cetera. And so, if I may, I would like to move, the amendment says that a provider of these services means any person that provides dockless vehicles for hire. And I have checked with Legislative Reference, who assures me that that person means, can't le, we can't use the term company, but it indicates the owners, the company itself, not their employees severally or their contractors severally. So, it's not spreading the liability all over the lot. It's starting with the companies that sponsor these rentals. Thank you.
Seconded by Councilman Costello. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion currently, Chair of the Council, Councilman Reisinger.
What was amended?
Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Third read for final passage.
City Council Bill 17 dash 0074, Zoning Conditional Use Parking, Open Off-Street Area, 3023 Virginia Avenue. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking, open off-street area on the property known as 3023 Virginia Avenue as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0287, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District Variances 1235 West Lafayette Avenue. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1235 West Lafayette Avenue as outlined in red on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk, gross floor area per unit type and off-street parking regulations. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0315, Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority Renewal through April 23rd, 2023. For the purpose of renewing and continuing the Waterfront Management District and the Waterfront Management Authority, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the activities and authority of the Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee Announcements. Chair of the Council, Vice President Middleton. I was on that side last week.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee will hear, will have a committee work session for Bill Number 180293, the Baltimore Tourism Improvement District, the establishment of that, at, on Thursday, March 28th, 2019, at 1:00 PM, right here in council chambers. And again, it's at 1:00 PM. We usually have our hearings at 10:00 AM, but this will be at 1:00 PM, right before the 2:00 PM budget hearing.
Committee Announcements. Chair of the Council, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Urban Affairs Committee will be having a hearing on City Council Bill 180295, which is the Baltimore City Landmark List Exteriors Hanlon Park. That will be on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 2:10 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair of the Council, Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19 dash 0327 on May the 1st, at 1:05 PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district with variances located at 2323 North Coward Street. Mr. President, I move for suspension of rules to announce a hearing.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce to Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion currently, Chair of the Council.
Yeah, it was 10 dash 2. The committee will hold a hearing on 19 dash 0348 on May 8th, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district with variances located at 343 Robert Street. Mr. President, I move for suspension of the rules to announce a hearing, 10 dash 2.
Seconded by Councilwoman Snead. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce to Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, Chair of the Council, Councilman Reisinger.
This is on Bill 19 dash 0355 on May the 8th, at 1:05 PM. This is a rezoning located at 141 through 145 West Hamburg Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee Announcements. Okay, regular announcements. I'd like for all of us to wish Councilman Ed Reisinger and Councilman Brandon Scott a happy birthday. Councilman Reisinger's birthday is April the 1st. I got some jokes for him. And Councilman Scott's birthday is April the 8th. Happy birthday to both. And is the council choir ready to sing happy birthday? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Councilman Scott, Councilman Reisinger. Happy birthday to you. Councilman Stokes. You gotta stand up. You gotta sta, you have to stand up.
The choir on March the 23rd, when it was my birthday.
They didn't want to sing.
They, they had to rehearse.
Okay, Madam President, I would like to request a moment of silence for former Maryland Governor Harry Hughes. That's just my announcement, okay? Did I start over there last time?
No.
Yeah, I did. No, yes, yes, I did. Committee announce, I mean, a regular announcement. Chair of the Council, Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Costello and myself, on this Wednesday, March 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, we're hosting what we're calling Comprehensive Solutions for Safer and Healthier Central West Baltimore. Panelists include Commissioner Harrison, Dr. Santalisis, Dr. Diza Rasa, the Health Commissioner, Dr. Andre Bunley, Mayor's Office African-American Male Engagement, Jason Perkins-Coens from Mayor's Office Employment Development, Director Moore from Wreckin' Parks. Just an opportunity to get, to talk about solutions for a healthier, safer Baltimore. And so, we're just asking residents to come out and find out how they can get involved in the community and get resources to help our, help our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the Council, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I solemnly ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for the now 64 victims of homicides in Baltimore City and all those that we continue to lose to the opioid crashes as well.
Chair of the Council, Vice President Middleton.
I first just would like to do a shout-out for the Park Heights Saints. I think all of you remember the time when they came here and we took pictures and congratulated them for their championship. Well, they did another leap of faith last week and had the opening, they, the FCH and many sponsors bought a house on Rice's Town Road near the park where they practice. And the house was renovated and it opened last year. It's basically a community safe haven for the football team. The, the inside of the house is just extremely beautiful. The lower level is all weight equipment. The first floor, when you go in, there's, it's just a area to relax with TV, a big kitchen. On the second, on the top floor are computers and helping them to, you know, improve their study habits and so on. So, this, and I thank Councilman Pinkett for coming on that opening day also to visit. It's, I think everyone, all of you should try to stop there. It's something that can happen just about in every district. I mean, this is just a dream come true for this organization. And I just want to thank everyone that played a role in putting that together. So, on that note, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, April 15th, 2019, at 5:00 PM. And a moment of silence for the families of 64. And a moment of silence for the families of sixty-four homicides, our continued opioid epidemic, and also former governor of Maryland, Harry Hughes, and his family.
Thank you. There been no further business. This concludes the fifty-fifth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.[1796.61][1796.61]